It is six. Okay, so I don't know if you guys have seen the study guide on eLearn. It's on that first page. It's just a Word document, it says "study guide." It goes through every topic you need to know for the test and everything you're expected to demonstrate understanding on. So I'm just gonna go through some examples from that study guide. There's three sections to it. The first one is back to about the beginning of the class, "structure, nomenclature." So, I'm just gonna go through some examples of naming. We did this forever ago, so just a little refresher. So the first thing you want to do is find your parent carbon chain. So, just start with what is maybe the most obvious chain. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So I have eight there, but I have to check and make sure that really is the longest chain. So I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, so that is my longest chain. So... Okay, so if my longest chain is eight carbons long, then what's my parent compound? Octane, right? Because I have eight carbons, and it's all single bonds. Okay, so now I have to go through my side groups. Okay, so this is one side group. This is another one. And then I'm gonna number my chain. So you're gonna number, starting on the end that's closest to your first side group. So, I'm gonna start over here, right? This is closest to this first methyl group. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, so now we need to identify our side groups. This is the methyl group, right?
An F.
Uh huh. And ethyl group. So now we just put it all together in alphabetical order. Okay, so ethyl goes first.
E.
So I have four, ethyl, three, methyl, octane. And remember, you separate numbers from numbers with commas and numbers from words with dashes. Does that make sense? Feel good on that one? Okay. So the next one is a little bit trickier, it's your double bond. Okay, so for naming alkenes, you still, your first step is finding your parent chain. Okay, but for alkanes, or alkenes, your longest carbon chain has to include your double bond. Okay, so in this case, it doesn't matter, but if you do have a question like that where you have a chain with a double bond, but there's another chain without the double bond that's longer, you still have to go with a chain with a double bond because you have to have the double bond in your parent chain. Okay? So our parent chain is gonna be this, right here. Three, four, five, one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, so my parent chain is six carbons long, and there's a double bond. So it's gonna be hexene. Okay? And for alkenes, you have to designate the position of the double bond. So, my double bond is on carbon two. It's right here, C2. Okay? So it's gonna be 2-hexene. Okay? Oh, I forgot, we had to number our chain. So you number the chain on the end that's closest to the double bond. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, so now, we have one side group, just a chloro group, and that's on C2. Okay? So, now we can start writing our name. We have 2-chloro-2-hexene. But wait, wait, wait. Is there isomerism here? There is. Because this double bond... Let's see. I have four different groups attached to this double bond, right? So I have this group attached to that carbon, and then I have a hydrogen right here. And then I have a methyl group attached to that carbon, and also a chloro group. So those are four different groups, right? So I can't do cis or trans, because that doesn't apply, because they're all different groups. So I'm gonna have to do E and Z configuration. Okay? So, out of these two, which one's higher priority?
The upper one.
Uh huh.
It's got the H2. Carbon is higher than octane.
That's not a... Yeah, right, so to assign higher and lower priority, you're just paying attention to the atomic number of the atom connected to that carbon. So, this right here is a carbon, so atomic number is six. And then we have a hydrogen, which is just one. Okay? So on this other side, I have a methyl group. So this is attached to a carbon, so again, that's gonna be six. That's the atomic number. And then I have chlorine. Do we remember that atomic number? Seventeen. You cheater. Okay, so, and then your chlorine is gonna be higher priority because it's a bigger atomic number. Okay? So, we have our higher priority groups.
E.
Uh huh. On opposite sides, which means it's E. Okay? E is opposite sides. And Z is same. So our final IUPAC name would be E2-chloro-2-hexene.
How many points did he take off if he forgot to put the E in parentheses?
I don't... He probably wouldn't take anything off for that. Don't quote me on that, but I don't think he'd take anything off. If anything, maybe like one point. I don't, I don't know that he'd take anything off, though. He's not too, too picky about that kind of stuff. But, you never know. Okay. Everyone good on that? Feel good about E and Z? Okay. So, for this one... My parent compound, it's my ring, right? Okay, and it's a five-membered ring. Pentane, cyclopentane.
Oh, wow.
Five, yeah. Cyclopentane. Okay. Then I have the number right ring. So, I can assign either of these side groups with number one, right? So if I start with this one, I'll have one, two, three. Or if I start from the bromo group, I have one, two, three. Okay? Which direction am I gonna count?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Uh huh. Right, because if you have a situation like this where you have two different directions of counting that would give you the same numbers, you want the lowest numbers to be assigned to the side group that's gonna come first in the name. So this is ethyl, right? And this is bromo, so B comes first. So we want whichever side group is gonna come first in the name to have the lowest number. Okay? So that is gonna be one, bromo, three, ethyl, cyclopentane. Any questions so far, my friends? Okay. Let's move on. Okay, so he also might ask you for, he'll give you a name, and then he'll ask you to draw it, or draw a structural formula. Okay, so let's try these. So, the best way to do these is just start from your parent compound, start from the right, and then work your way left. So, my parent compound, nonane, right? Yeah, which is nine. You don't have to know that, because we only go to octane, but we know that's nine. So, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
So you're gonna ask for a structural formula or the last question?
Um, he'll probably ask for a little of both. Yeah, he might ask for a structural formula and line structure, or either/or, be prepared for both. Okay, and so that's my parent compound, it's nonane, just a nine-carbon chain. So then I can start placing my side groups. Okay, so I have two methyl groups on two and three. So, you just have one methyl group here, one here, and then a chloro group on eight. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Easy enough, right? Okay. Now this next one, do we remember what dian means?
Uh huh, that means two. And it's an alkane.
Uh huh.
And it's six carbons.
Uh huh. So it's gonna be a six-carbon chain with two double bonds, okay? And these numbers right here will tell you where those double bonds are on that chain. Okay? So I have one, two. I don't want purple. I want black. One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, so, it says 1, 5, hexadiene, which means I have a double bond on C1 and a double bond on C5. So, there's my first double bond, one, two, three, four, five. There's my second double bond, okay? And then I also have a methyl group on C2. Okay? Does that make sense? So always remember to assign a position to your double bonds in alkenes, because that's normally what people forget, is that you have to specify on what carbon your double bond is on. Okay? So you will more than likely get one of these questions on the test. He'll just say, like, "find the 10 isomers of something," and I'll give you a molecular formula, and ask you to find however many isomers there are.
Is there like also a set formula for how many isomers are?
There's not like a... I don't know if there's actually like a set formula for how many isomers are. There might be for like just regular alkanes. If he's gonna ask you, he'll probably tell you how many there are and how many you're looking for. Other than that, you just look for them until there aren't anymore, until you start repeating again, so...
It would be helpful if he'd tell us non-isomers.
I'm pretty sure he will. Yeah. But if...
Hey, Lydia.
Then you'll just keep looking until you start repeating. Yeah, there might be for like alkanes, I don't remember. Just as, as the molecule gets bigger, there's more and more isomers. But yeah, I think he'll tell you how many there are. So this one's kind of simple. If he gives you one of these on the test, it'll be more complicated, but these take a long time, so for time's sake, I just went with this one. So, is this an alkane, cycloalkane, alkane?
Alkane.
Right, because it's follows CnH2... Oh heavens, that is so ugly. Okay. Right? So we know that that's alkane, so we know that all of these isomers will have only single bonds. Okay? So, our first one. Yes. Yeah, I haven't seen your exact exam, so I don't know your exact questions, but there's a good chance he'll have some questions about cis and trans isomerism, and how to tell that, and, yeah. Like I said, I don't, I haven't seen your exact test, but he will ask you about cis and trans, and E and Z configurations, and stuff like that. Okay? So, our first isomer, we know is just a five-carbon chain. Remember, what's that called?
Alkane.
Okay, but what do I have to have in front of it?
E and Z.
Right, it's a straight chain. Okay, so a good way to go through these questions. Yeah, do you want to list all the isomers to include those? Yes. If there is an option for cis and trans, he'll probably tell you if there are geometric isomers versus structural isomers, but if there is an option for cis and trans isomers, then yes, you do have to name it. I think he'll probably specify that, maybe. But like if he gave you a formula that followed CnH2N like alkenes, then you have to give all the different isomers, including cycloalkanes and alkenes, because they have the same molecular formula. Right? Does that make sense, Kaylee? Okay. So, a good way to go about these questions is after you find your just simplest straight chain, you can take one carbon off the end, and then find all your butane derivatives, and just move that carbon around, and find however many isomers you can, and then keep taking carbons off the end and finding all the derivatives as you go down the number of carbons. So, if I take one carbon off the end, I can put it here, right? Okay. So, that would be named 2-methylbutane. Or, this could also be called isopentane. Because iso means 2-methyl. So because there's a 2, there's a methyl group on this second carbon, that means I can say isopentane. But the IUPAC name is 2-methylbutane. Okay? So, I can't move this methyl group anywhere else, right? Because if I moved it to this carbon, it'd just be the same thing, because I could count from the other direction. Okay, so that's all my butane derivatives. So, I can take another carbon off the end and try my propane derivatives. So if I do that, I can put one methyl group up top, and on the bottom, and I have one here. Okay? And I can't put those methyl groups anywhere else without repeating 2-methylbutane. Okay, so that one would be?
Ethylmethyl.
What? This is my parent chain, right? One, two, three? So it'd be 2, 2-dimethylpropane. Yeah, so like I said, he's not gonna give you anything this simple, probably. It'll be more complicated than this, but the strategy is still the same. Just take a carbon off the end, see where you can put it, find all your options, until you start repeating isomers you already made, and then keep going down the list. Okay? Everyone feel good about that one? Okay. So, the second section on the study guide is about chemical reactions. So, halogenation of alkanes, electrophilic addition for alkenes, things like that. So, the first example I'm gonna go through is halogenation of alkanes, right? So, anyone wanna take a stab at what one of my products will be?
Oh. I have your bromide. And...
Yes. But there's a lot of those. I mean, you're on the right track. So, I could put my bromo group there, right? Or, I could put it here. I could put it there. Or...
Well, he wants to write it out at any time?
He might ask you for all the possible products, or he might ask you just for the major product. Yeah, it just depends. Or, one more. I could put bromo on that side. Can you see that? Kind of. So I just put that bromo on the methyl group. Okay? So my possible products, which one's gonna be my major product?
One and a half.
Uh huh. Right, so, this will be my major product, because the regioselectivity of halogenation of alkane reactions depends on the stability of the intermediate radical. Okay, so, we can go ahead and go through that mechanism. So the first step for all my halogenation reactions is initiation, which is where my bromine breaks apart, right? So, this bond has two electrons. So when it breaks, one of them is gonna go to one of the bromine groups, and the other one's gonna go to the other one.
That's the initiation step.
Uh huh, it's initiation. So that gives me two bromine radicals. Okay? And that is initiation. That's the first step in all halogenation reactions for alkanes. Okay? So my next step. I have my alkane, right? And we already said that this is my major product, right? So I know that the reaction has to happen on that carbon, which has one hydrogen. So I know that it's gonna take place with that hydrogen. Okay, so...
The radical attacks the hydrogen bond?
Uh huh, yeah. Okay, so, like you said, the radical attacks a hydrogen bond. When this bond breaks, has two bonding electrons here, one of my bonding electrons is gonna go between here to make my hydrogen-bromine bond, and the other one is gonna go back to that carbon to make an alpha radical. And this radical, this unpaired electron from the radical is gonna go between the hydrogen and bromide to also make that hydrogen-bromide bond, because I need two bonding electrons. Okay? So from there... I'm gonna make an alpha radical, right? Which is the tertiary radical, which we know is more stable than a secondary or primary radical, which is why that's your major product. Because it's more stable, therefore, it's easier to make and faster. Okay? So I have my tertiary radical, and my byproduct, hydrogen-bromide, which is my first stable product. Okay? So then I have my radical in my next step, which is unstable, and it's gonna attack another molecule of my bromine. Okay? So, when this bond breaks right here, one electron is gonna go to this bromide to regenerate my bromine radical. The other electron is gonna go between the carbon and the bromine to make a carbon-bromine bond, and then this unpaired electron from my radical is also gonna go between here to make a carbon-bromine bond. Which is my second product, my actual desired product. And then, I regenerated my bromine radical. So now, these two steps just keep repeating until you stop shining the light, or heating, or your reactant runs out. And this is called propagation or chain growth. And we see how this product is the minor product, right? That would be formed from a secondary radical, and same with this one and this one. And this one would be formed through a primary radical, so that one really doesn't form barely at all. Okay? We all good on that one? Let's move on. So, this is electrophilic addition of alkenes. I think we started this Monday, maybe? Or maybe Friday? I don't quite remember. Okay, so, we can go ahead and jump in the mechanism here. So this time, we're using full arrows, right? Because there's no more radicals, we don't have unpaired electrons, we're demonstrating movement of electron pairs instead of single electrons. Okay? So, this reaction starts by these pi electrons come and attack this hydrogen, okay? This hydrogen-chlorine bond breaks, and these bonding electrons go to chlorine. Okay? So do you remember the regioselectivity of this type of reaction?
Markov.
Right. So it's called Markov-Nikov's rule. Okay, so your hydrogen is gonna add to whichever one of the double bonded carbons already has the most hydrogen. Okay? So this one has one hydrogen, right? And that one doesn't have any. So, I know my hydrogen is gonna add to that carbon. And then my positive charge is gonna form on that one, which forms a tertiary carbocation, which follows the same rules as the radicals, in that a tertiary radical, or a tertiary carbocation is more stable than secondary and primary, and therefore, it's a lot easier to make and a lot faster. Okay? So, after I make my carbocation, I have the chlorine anion. Which is gonna come and attack this carbocation at the positive charge. So my product... It's just that. Easy enough, right? So, Markov-Nikov's rule is rooted in the same rule that tertiary carbocations are more stable than secondary, primary, because if I added this hydrogen to the opposite carbon, so this one, then I'd form my positive charge on this one, and then it'd only be a secondary cation. So that's why it's more favorable and more stable. Does that make sense? And it's my product. Okay. Would you like me to go over why tertiary carbocations are more stable? Or do you feel like you guys got that? Like the hyperconjugation thing? Okay. I'll take your silence as a yes. Okay, so? Okay. So this is a tertiary carbocation, right? The secondary. That's a primary. Okay. So for my carbocations, I have a positive charge right here, right? Okay. So the aim of the molecule is going to be to neutralize that charge, okay? So I know I have electron density here, here, and here. So due to the hyperconjugation effect, this, all these electron densities can migrate to neutralize that charge. And the less charge you have, the more stable the molecule is. Okay. And so for this one, I only have two fields of electron density that can neutralize and here I only have one. Okay. Does that make sense? Okay. So? So this next reaction is what we did today, which is again, we're just electrophilic addition for alkenes. It's a little bit different, though. So how are you going to set this up? So you have your alkeen and then you're going to put your bromine or chlorine perpendicular to that double bond. Okay. So from here, remember how I said that you could have a dipole moment here? So in that dipole moment, you have one of these bromines that's partially positively charged and one of these bromines that's partially negatively charged, okay? So these pi electrons are going to attack this bromine that's partially positively charged. So I'll draw my arrow down here. And then these electrons are going to go back and form a bond with that carbon, okay? And at the same time, this bond releases and lets go at that other bromine. So that forms a three-membered ring with one of those bromines. And this bromine has a positive charge now because it has too many bonds. Okay. So then I also have my bromine anion that I just made, okay? And it's going to attack from the opposite side of this bromine. So if I had, if I had them on the top here, then it'd attack from the bottom. But because I have it from the bottom, it's going to attack from the top, okay? So I have bromine anion. So this is going to attack this carbon right here. And at the same time, this bond is going to release and these electrons are going to go to this bromine to neutralize that positive charge. So from there, I get these three. So this carbon-bromine bond is still intact. That's going to go there. And then my other bromine is attached to the opposite side. It's called anti-addition, which just means that the two different bromine atoms add to opposite sides of the double bond. Something, yes? Sorry, what is it? Not for this reaction, but there are reactions where it is sin addition. But this specific one with halogens and alkenes is going to be always anti-addition because something called steric hindrance. And we haven't really gotten there yet. But basically, it just means that this, this whole system down here with all your electron clouds is just too busy for this anion to attack from that side. So it's going to come to the opposite side to avoid this whole traffic mess down there. So that's why it's anti-addition. But we'll get more into steric hindrance later, maybe Friday. Are we good with that one? And this is called a bromineum ion, I forgot about that. You probably know that. Which just means that there's a positive charge on bromine. Okay. So the third section of the study guide is has to do with bonding. Just going through sp2 hybridization, sp3 hybridization, how double bonds are formed and all that. Okay. So what I have written down here is it's the hybridization of sp3 hybrid orbitals and sp2 hybridized carbons, okay? So up here is just regular carbon at its ground state. I have two electrons in 2s and then two electrons in 2p orbitals, one in 2px, one in 2py. And my 2pz is empty. Okay, but when I excite carbon, which just happens in natural conditions, this electron gets bumped up to 2p. So I have one electron in 2s, one in 2px, one in 2py, and one in 2pv, okay? So when I hybridize those orbitals, I mix 1s orbital, this one, and the 3p orbitals, which are shaped like that. It's kind of like holding two balloons together. And I form four sp3 hybrid orbitals, which if you remember, has two lobes, but only one of the lobes can form a bond. So we typically only show this bigger lobe. Okay, and it's called sp3 because I have 1s component and 3p components. Okay, so this is for single bonds for tetrahedral carbons. So just carbons with only single bonds. But when I start getting into double bonds, okay? Then I start getting into sp2 hybrid orbitals. So again, you have your two electrons in 2s, 2 in 2p. And it gets excited in regular conditions. I have one electron in each 2s, 2px, 2py, and 2bz. Okay, so this time, when it's hybridized, I only make three hybrid orbitals. So I makes 1s orbital and 2p orbitals instead of three. So then I only make three sp2 hybrid orbitals because I have 1s component and 2p components, which is shaped about the same as sp3. You still have one lobe that's bigger than the other one and only this bigger lobe can form bonds. So we only show that again. So when I make three sp2 hybrid orbitals, I'm left with one unhybridized 2p orbital, which is where I form pi bonds. Okay. I have that shown on this next slide. Okay, so this, these are two sp3 hybridized carbons. So I have all single bonds, they're tetrahedral, okay? So this carbon and this carbon overlap. They're sp3 hybrid orbitals and form a sigma bond, which is just hat-to-hat overlap, which is this kind of overlap and like perpendicular like that. And I just form a sigma bond with both our sp3 hybrid orbitals, okay? And all these other sp3 hybrid orbitals can form other bonds with carbons or whatever else is there. I just put hydrogens here for simplicity's sake. So this, this bond right here would be formed by the overlap of this carbon's sp3 hybrid orbital and this hydrogen's just 1s orbital. Okay. And remember, there is another lobe here, but it can't form bond, so we just don't show it. So that's why there's only one lobe. Okay. So I have written down here, so sp3 hybridized carbons means the same thing as tetrahedral, which just means that there's all single bonds on that carbon. Okay. So these carbons are sp2 hybridized, which means that there's a double bond, okay? So this carbon and this carbon can form a sigma bond, which again is just that hat-to-hat perpendicular overlap. That's not perpendicular, but I don't know the word for that. Just, you know what I mean. So that's just formed by sp2 to sp2 and it forms a sigma bond, okay? And then these sp2 hybrid orbitals, there's three of them, remember, can form bonds with hydrogen or whatever, other carbons or anything else. But I also have that one unhybridized p orbital. So there's my two lobes of my p orbital. Because remember, it looks kind of like two balloons held together. So that's my two lobes. I have my two lobes shown here. So that's just one unhybridized p orbital. So while this sp2 orbitals overlap and form a sigma bond, there's an attraction and sharing of electrons between these unhybridized p orbitals, which forms a pi bond, okay? So if this sigma bond and this pi bond form a double bond. Okay, so that's where the two components of the double bond come in. Okay. And an sp2 hybridized carbon is trigonal planar instead of tetrahedral. So the bond angle here is 120 instead of 1 and 9.5 in tetrahedral. And it means that there is a double bond somewhere on that carbon. Do you feel okay about bonding? Yes?
Oh, so since like, like the pi bond is just one pi bond?
Yes, yeah, yeah, thank you, I forgot about that. So the combination of the sharing of electrons above and below the sigma bond is just one pi bond. I'll write that. Okay. So you have any other questions about the test? Or will we done? I think I'll probably still go over some stuff on Friday that might be on the test. I'm not sure how far he'll get. I would probably look ahead in advance and just go through the PowerPoint and the notes up to the end of section two, just to be prepared. So, yeah, I don't know how far he'll get on Friday.
Do you think there's homework on Friday or Monday?
Hmm?
Will he get his homework some?
Oh, yeah.
Monday or Friday?
Hmm, I don't know. I don't, I don't think he'll go over it Friday because he's still not done with the section two PowerPoint, I don't think. He might though, I'm not sure, actually. He might go over it Monday, actually. He probably will go over it before the test, though. Sometime, either Friday or Monday, maybe. Any other questions?
I think he's going to ask us about 3D structures.
Wait, what is it? He might. She asked if he's going to ask us about, ask you guys about 3D structures. If he does, it'll be something really simple. Yeah, he might ask you about like the 3D structure, just like a simple 1, 2-carbon molecule, just to show that you know that there's two bonds that are co-planar, one in the back, one in the front for each carbon. So. You're welcome, Kaylin. Thank you guys for coming.